It's impossible to bang that without it being loud. All right, now we're going to call the June 24th, 2025 Growth Management Affordable Housing Workshop to Order Superintendent Ayers, if you could start this for us?
Yes ma'am, thank you, thank you Madam Chair. So Board Members, this is a workshop, you know, today we'll basically have three parts. We're going to start with around growth management, real estate evaluation, and then affordable housing, so three parts. A lot of information today, so just no going into this workshop, you know, we'll have some meaningful discussion today. There's no feeling like you have to make a decision on anything today, so this is really a lot of, a lot of information gathering for all of us today, have some meaningful discussion, and then we know there'll be some future workshops, future discussions around each of this. So no, no pressure feeling like we're coming out of here and making decisions on anything today, really know this is basically part one of some of future discussions we'll have moving forward as a school district. So we're going to go ahead and get this kickstarted, I'm going to turn this over to Deputy Superintendent Farkas.
I appreciate the opportunity, it is a complex topic, that's why there's a lot of stuff in this notebook, and I'm glad that Mr. Ayers started it that way, because it is important to understand, there's a lot of material here, and there are not, not a lot of simple decisions, there's a lot of complex decisions with lots of variables. So the whole point of today's conversation and workshop is to level set, make sure we're all on the same page, we're all the same information as we go forward. We anticipate lots of questions, and we also anticipate a follow-up workshop to with, based on the direction of what the Board talks about today. We're going to talk a little bit about the sheet, Pablo. Love looking at the back of my head, that's even better. So we try to develop into three different sections, as the Superintendent said, and growth management, and a little talk about impact fees, real estate evaluation, and then affordable housing as we go forward. We have two experts in the field that are here with us, John Ford from Ford and Associates, who many of you know as has been our Council, that's worked with the district for 30 years, probably him and Jerry, and then also Andy Wright from Franklin Street, who's an expert in the field that's going to talk and help with our evaluations we go forward. We're going to first move right into the growth management and planning and the impact fees. So what does growth management do? They talk about FISH, so you've heard the word FISH, that's a Florida House of Educational Plant Survey, they do our five-year facilities plan, they do countywide development tracking, which is a big part of what they do in school concurrency, student demographics, are they full? Principals that say, is the school full or not full? Also, all the real estate transactions, purchasing, lease agreements, any of the easements we have with TICO and other places, school siting and entitlement, as you know, we've been through a couple bumps to the road when it comes to school siting, the school attendance boundaries, which is always a fun community topic, and then also our GIS, which is our mapping, the, all the maps that you see when you talk about, hey, I'm a board member, I want to see what the schools are in, Mike, can you get us a map? That's also based in growth management and planning. School concurrency, which is a big part of it, whenever we, we track all the growth and development that happens in all of Hillsborough County, and we look at six different factors we go into it. Our 40th day enrollment, that's why you see it on our website under growth management, is our kind of snapshot of what we look for, and that's what concurrency is based on the 40th day enrollment. Yes, there's variables there, some schools gain after that, some schools lose after that, but 40th day is the snapshot we look at. FISH capacity, that is defined by the state, not by the county, so we have to say what the actual classrooms are, and they look at what that is. You'll hear level of service, and that's 100% of capacity that we look for, you'll also hear concurrency service area, so we could go down a rabbit hole just on concurrency alone, but long story short, concurrency is one that it used to be, if I'm building a neighborhood in West Chase, if I'm building some homes there, is there room at that local school or one of the contiguous schools? The state has now changed that to be anywhere, is there a room anywhere in the entire county? Five-years facility plan is one that you see twice at the end of July, and then also in October, and then development reviews. Whenever anybody wants to build anything, it actually comes to our growth management area, and they talk about it and make sure we have room for it. So what does that mean? They coordinate the planning, they align with local plans, they do data sharing, and they establish a review process. I'm going to build 100 homes, what does that look like? Is there enough room in the local schools? One of the challenges is, once it gets approved, they may not build it for 10 or 15 years. So that's a challenge for us, we got something approved, 1,000 homes, the economy takes a downturn, then they decide they're going to build it, it's already been approved, they can build it when they need to, that's a, that's a little bit of a challenge for us. Part of our internal agreement, which you'll hear referred to as the ILA, with the county is a long-range planning study every five years. So we're right in the middle of that, in the next, probably by the end of July, beginning of August, you'll see that final draft of what that long-range planning study is, and we look forward to sharing that with the Board. Also part of that is, we're going to talk a little bit about impact fees. So what happens if there's, are there enough seats? I'm going to build a neighborhood, 100 homes, are there enough seats? Yes? Not a problem, they go forward with it. No, they got two choices if there's not enough seats. They do a prop share agreement, which is basically a prepayment for the fees, and this is one of Mr. Porter's expertise, so Jim, if I say anything wrong, please correct me and do it too. Thank you, I know you would. So the other ones, they can just wait, wait till there is capacity, till we build those schools, that's part of it too, but the state is very, that's a regulated process, that is not a county process that we come up with. One of the challenging things are, yes, there's 100 homes, but what does that mean? How many kids are going to come out of those 100 homes? That is the variable we don't control, and I use my neighborhood as an instance, there's about 100 homes in my neighborhood, when I do my normal walks around the neighborhood, and heard Dr. Han talking about that this morning, this year there was 10 seniors in the 100 homes that had just graduated, they had put little yard signs out front, which statistically will tell you that's impossible, there's no way you're going to have 10 seniors out of the 100 homes, but it just happens that way, depending on when people move in, growth, and what they have. So what does that look like? Generation rates different for K through 5, 6 through 8, and 9 through 12, and so we just gave a little 100 home, what this means, there's a 100-home neighborhood, in theory, we should have 20 elementary kids, nine middle school kids, and 14 high school kids. That is a huge variable, that is something that we don't control, but we have to, the state, I'm sorry, the district, the county requires that we have that development rate. So what does that look like? And we did an example of the Plant City neighborhoods that we have right up here, you see the neighborhoods that are in our stack, how many reservations for each one of those neighborhoods based on those generation rates, and what this looks like for one growth area. So Plant City High School is what this map is, in this area of what we have so far, there's 504 student reservations, that are the areas that you talk about, where you're driving out on I-4 and looking to your left as you're headed east, that's a perfect area of the neighborhoods, and you can see the names, North Park Isle, and Walden Woods, and Orange Hill, all different neighborhoods that are, that are north of Point City, they track every single one of those, and we keep them all together to ensure that we know what's coming. So what's an example, let's take a little bit closer look into what this is, and here's the chart you see below us. So if you look at North Park Isle, and there's a lot of articles about whether we should have bought this property, 2014, that's what North Park Isle looked like north of Plant City, this is what it looks like today, and today meaning six months ago, it's probably even changed from then, it's a totally different site. We own this property down here, actually down here, to do it, so we have a high school that's just north of Stingray Chevrolet, so you'll, you'll see that, that's the future home of our Plant City High School, but it's important to see, in just 10 years, it's a totally different picture of what we're looking for. Another important part of what you're going to hear and talk about is the Urban Service Area, USA. So our urban service area is the part in blue here, there's a proposed comprehensive map amendment, what does that mean? The easiest way, and there's a lot more variables to it, is, is there county water and county sewers, is it something that we have access to? So this looks like a small map, and you see Summerfield all the way down Belmont, Cypress Creek, Wyomama, here's our new Morgan High School, it's right here, that's in that area. So even though it looks like a small map, they're estimating that's going to be 16,000 homes, which is going to be equivalent to about 1,500 to 2,000 kids that'll come out of those, depending on generation rates. We know that generation rates are an estimate, like we talked about, the reality is, it can be a lot more than that, because the suburbia obviously generates a lot more kids than, like our downtown places. You're also going to see a similar amendment north of Plant City, to make sure there's city water north of Plant City. So what do we do when we see this kind of stuff? Well, here's our future sites, those are the three sites we already own in Plant City, there's sites that we have here, Belmont Reserve, Water Set, which is dedicated in the part of it, we've got our South County Career Center, Westlake Drive, which is where we're going to build a high school that's opening up in August, Morgan, the middle school opens up in 27, and the elementary school F that follows that, but you also see Bishop Road. Bishop Road is a site that we bought 10 years ago, and they said that it wasn't up to par, that it wasn't, it was an F-weighted road, and so we couldn't build on that. Meanwhile, there's thousands of homes being built around that, and so we anticipate that that road is going to be up to par, we'll be able to build there, and then Council Grove is an example of one that we're in the process of acquiring to do it. These are all sites that we own as a district, that we are prepared for the growth. So Westlake, this is the high school, and you can see what that is at a stage of what it was in '14 versus what it is now, there's literally hardly any suburbia in that part two, and now it's completely filled with where we are. Plant City, 9,400 dwellings, 1,398 elementary kids, 649 middle school, 905 high school kids, just out of what's been approved so far in Plant City, just to give you a reference point of kind of what, the numbers of what we're planning for and what we talk about. This is the long-range planning, I want to make one correction, the south where it says 2 PK is actually one of those, so I just wanted to, that was a typo, two total, one in northwest and one in the south, but we built five new schools and we converted two schools, and it indicates during this five-year period since we did the first long-range plan, we'll have a new long-range plan, data would say that we're probably not going to have a lot of changes, that we're going to still have a lot of that need for what we have in both Plant City and South County as we go forward. So yes, we built five new schools, but based on my simple math, it's 18 minus 5, because we still need, still need 13 more schools that are coming. Yes, and that's, that's, I think it may be higher than that based on what we're looking at. So impact fees, this Board, for all the large districts, and you'll hear it from the Ford and Associates, has as little a debt as any large district in the state, or one of the lowest out there. That's because we've used impact fees to do that. In 2020, they raised the impact fees to $8,227, here's a list of where we are compared to other districts. Adoption percentage, we'll talk a little bit about as we go forward, but as you can tell, they have to be updated on a regular basis, the cost of construction, even from 2020, has drastically changed. So you're going to see, and we got a little snap, sneak peek, peek of what's going to happen from our long-range planning study, what they're guessing is that we're going to go from 8,000 estimate to $17,842 is what it should be. That's a huge jump from that standpoint. We have a bit of a problem with that, though. There's actually a law, federal statute 163.31801, which says you can't go up more than 50% for statutes, so even if we, if we were able to get this adopted, you can see what that looks like, it'd really be $12,340 would be our new impact fee.
Yeah, it's important to remember that this Board doesn't control that, that's completely the Board of County Commissioners, they, they're the ones that adopt the impact fee ordinance and set the impact fee, so it's important for this Board and for the public to understand that you have no control over that amount.
And that is the punchline, that's actually was the next one, no, Jim, you're exactly right, that's for, important for us to understand. So it, all that to lead to kind of where this slide is, which is, if we're using impact fee only, this is where we're going to be just funding on impact fees. Now, the half penny sales tax allows a little flexibility to pay a little bit upfront, pay ourselves back from impact fees on that, but again, it's only impact fee funded at the end of the day. That's what we look like, that's what we look like. A high school in Plant City would be 20, 39, and 40 is when we'd be able to afford that, and we'll talk a little bit about why that's unrealistic. An ideal timeline of what this looks like, and even this has, you know, a high school in 33, the realities will probably need it before then as well, so between these two gaps, you're going to see about a $275, $300 million gap between what we would do ideally versus what we currently are able to do with impact fees, so there's two things that we can go. We can lobby to have impact fees increased, but as Mr. Porter clearly stated, that has nothing, we can lobby, but it's still, it's a county commission decision. Or we go and talk about what financing looks like, and what are our choices for how we fund these? We can take it from the general fund, but just to give a reference point, our current general fund, which we're very proud of, would be able to build two high schools and be completely depleted. So it's not realistic for us to do that for non-recurring money. So that leads us to, okay, so what are our choices from a Board standpoint? We know that we have more needs than what we currently have the funding for, so let's talk to the people who are experts and have been around this district for a while and can kind of give us what that looks like, and I'll turn it over to John Ford.
Thanks very much, Chris. Okay, my name is John Ford, I'm trying to not block the screen while simultaneously talk to everybody, so apologies. We attempted to do a couple of things in putting together this analysis, the first was to put together some sort of long-term projection for the main sources of revenue for the district's capital program. There are a number of sources that go into that, the four largest are the local capital improvement millage, that's the one and a half mil money, in fiscal '25, that was estimated to bring in $263 million. We did assume that that tax rate stays consistent going forward, and that the TAV in the county grows by about 4% a year. The half penny sales tax runs through December 31st of 2028, and over the last 12 months, it brought in $206 million, that's based on actual receipts through the Department of Revenue, so that won't match up cleanly with any of the last financial statements. The CIT, the Community Investment Tax, it was slated to expire at the end of 2026, and until then, the district receives 25% of those revenues. The tax was extended via voter referendum to 2041, but with that extension, the district's share of the CIT drops to 5%. The district also has a couple of series of sales tax revenue bonds outstanding, and those go through the original term of the tax, they mature next year on October 1st. That tax is right about a quarter of the school half penny, they, they're almost identical from a collection standpoint, so the revenue's been about $51 million as opposed to the over 200. And then impact fees, impact fees tend to be the most volatile source of revenue, they're also one of the most important for building new, new space and new facilities. Chris was kind enough to provide us with estimates in fiscal 2025 for 40 million, and then $30 million per year on out. I want to emphasize that every-
Just want to make sure, I gave them those figures, but they come from the county, the county is actually the one that helps us project that 40 and 30 million dollar impact fee, based on the growths and the plats they see, or the homes they see purchasing, but yes, they, they see it going down $10 million in next year based on what the counties told us, which is interesting, because as we just talked about, there's a huge urban service area, and again, what they estimate, we're still going to get the money, it's still, it's still a flow-through, so it's not like it's going to be there, but we'll track that very closely, Michelle Orton and her team in growth management do a great job of tracking that, so we, we will get monthly statements of what that looks like, but that is what they predicted coming through.
Chris, we raised it in 2018?
Yes, exactly, it was effective in 2020, it was $4,000 and went to $8,000 in 2020. Yes, ma'am.
And I want to emphasize that every single assumption that's built into this is going to end up being wrong in any particular year. The hope is that over the course of 30 years, that we end up with a relatively good long-term trend line, but we do have to continuously reevaluate our position at any given time to assess the situation, it changes much more quickly than long-term projections tend to. And as the world is proving right now, there's a lot of things that you just don't see coming out of left field. Okay, there's some charts in here, this is the local capital improvement millage, this depicts the 4% growth rate and the taxable assessed valuation and maintenance of the one and a half mil levy. We have assumed that the statutory environment remains consistent, they don't introduce new laws that add to or detract from your revenues, that's a pretty dangerous assumption if you've watched the Florida Legislature over the past 10, 20 years. Within this, we show the transfers to charter schools, that is based on assumption about growth in district COFTE, capital outlay FTE, and charter capital outlay FTE. The red in the bar over here, that is your existing certificate of participation debt service, those are lease purchase agreements that you have outstanding for several dozen schools that mature between now and fiscal 2031. School capital outlay half, the half cent, the capital outlay surtax under statute, again, that runs through the middle of fiscal '29, the end of calendar year 2028, 3.5% per year growth, again, no changes to the existing statutory framework. Same goes for the CIT, this depicts the higher revenues that we receive through 2027, when our share drops down to 5%, the red again shows existing sales tax debt service. And then when you stack them all together, and you add in the impact fees that we talked about, and we also threw in the CO and DS money, and I would defer to Chris if we want to talk about that, these are the revenues that we, I think somewhat reasonably anticipate having for the district's capital program right now. The biggest challenge that I think that we have is the school half cent, the school half penny sales tax that matures at the end of 2028. If we do not attempt or succeed to renew that, our capital funding will drop, and we will not achieve those levels again based on these myriad of assumptions until the early 2040s, so it is quite a big hole in, in the activities that the district can undertake. So now we sort of have an idea of the revenues that we're working with, reasonable expectation of capital expenditures, not including major projects, so these expenditures, construction, maintenance, and renovation, the departmental budgets, transfers to the general fund is important, buses and vehicles, that's very important, other capital needs, these things are all, again, flatline assumptions, they assume about 3% growth every single year, but it doesn't include the new high schools, the new elementary schools, middle schools, tech centers, whatever it is that Chris was alluding to. So now we've got projected expenditures to compare against our revenues, and we've done that on this chart, which is not very pretty, and I apologize, but the green are the revenues that we have to work with, the red are the projected expenditures, and then the yellow bars depict how much money we have remaining, in other words, what's available for new construction during that time? The good news is, again, based on these assumptions, the yellow bars stay above the zero line, we have money to work with in every year in varying amounts. The bad news is, is based on assumptions, and as assumptions change, we will have less or more, and we're going to hope for more. Chris has already talked about the major capital projects, I'll skip over that.
So can we just go through, could you, Chris, go through that and let us know, new construction, you know, revitalize?
We certainly will, and as this group knows better than anybody, all of these are Board-approved, all of them will come to you as part of that conversation. The media center, the DW stands for District-wide, so there, those are sites that are out there too, and this is also multiple funding sources that are out there too. If the Board approves the steward or just rebuild, the new middle school build, the cafeteria redesign that we have in a couple of schools, the new middle schools F, which is at the, in the Westlake site, G, which is the Water Set 2 site, the Alonso and Steinbrenner additions, the new elementary school H, which is Plant City, the Bishop Road Elementary School, and Bishop Road Middle School, the Plant City High School, and the South County High School, because even though we're building Morgan, that by 33, there's a good opportunity that we're going to have another need for another high school in the southern part of the county, based on that urban service area expansion. I will guarantee you, there's projects that are going to be needed that are not on this list, and all the ones that are on this list have to be approved anyway, but when we were just throwing a dart at a dartboard, this is kind of a, some of, some of the projects that we came up with.
So now we dig into potential policy considerations and possibly philosophy considerations regarding debt, whether to finance or how to finance as opposed to pay as you go. First, on whether to finance, when we pay for projects on a pay-go, pay-as-you-go basis, that means that we are taking money out of reserves or out of current year revenues, and we're paying for a project immediately, we're not incurring any cost to issue the debt, we're also not paying any interest over the years in which we amortize those projects, those are both really, really good things. Unfortunately, it also means that we're not earning any interest on those reserves. If we had put those in the bank, maybe we would have earned less or more than we're currently paying on our bonds, we do get to borrow on a tax-exempt basis, so that's very good, credit rating matters there. When you do pay as you go, your capacity for construction is going to be limited to the funds that you have on hand, or the funds that you are going to receive in the short foreseeable future, so that may delay your projects, you may go through a revenue acquisition period where you wait for the funds to build up, and during that time, you are at risk for price-cost inflation in construction. That can work for or against you, I think everybody knows that over the last several years, we have only seen construction prices rise, so historically, recent history, that has only worked against us. Debt financing's kind of the opposite on every, on every tacit here, this is going to allow us to spread the cost of financing, the cost of constructing new schools over time. Now, the good news with that is that it allows people who will move to the county, say, three years from now and send kids to the schools, to share in the cost of paying for those schools. So there's a public policy aspect there, it also allows us to construct or possibly acquire schools or property when we need it, as opposed to waiting for funds to accrue, because we can reasonably anticipate revenues into the future. It's going to enhance our construction and acquisition capacity, we may or may not benefit from a time value aspect there. If construction cost inflation exceeds the interest rate, we are better off having paid and financed in the beginning, if construction costs go down, we would have been better off waiting, I don't have that crystal ball, so I would defer to the Board. The bad thing is that we incur interest expenses and transaction costs when we finance, depending upon predominantly the level of market interest rates, that's going to be the single biggest driver of financing costs, but also within that, the credit rating, that's going to depend on the specific financing structure, whether we're talking about general obligation bonds, sales tax revenue bonds, certificates of participation, or some sort of standalone lease purchase agreement, all of those things are going to factor into the interest rate, and then transaction costs matter as well. Financing may allow for the maintenance or growth of reserves in the capital funding area, and again, if we're earning interest on those reserves, which is comparable to or even greater than we're borrowing at, that's a benefit, so that's-
Mr. Ford and Mr. Farkas, so just over the last number of years, eight to 10 years, we've been on the left side, on the green side of this, correct? Just so everybody has an understanding.
100%, the last time that we borrowed money was the 90s, it was a 30-year that we're paying that expires here in 30 and 31, we refinanced it a couple of times earlier, but we have not used any money to borrow to do that, we also have not used general funds to do any new construction. The one exception to that would be like a Robinson High School, where we used the half penny because it was a, instead it was too expensive to actually do the AC and not worth it, that part two, we used half penny to pay for that, but every other thing we've done has been on the cash funding side of the house, and we've incurred no debt during that time.
And that, that goes into alignment with the statement that was made earlier around us having the least amount of debt, you know, of large school districts in the state of Florida, because we focused on having the cash to be able to pay for the schools through impact fees and such, half penny, to not put us on that, on that right side.
You are correct, and what that means is, as you well know Superintendent, is that you get a Shields Middle School, or you get a Sumner High School where they're overcrowded, so it's a choice that we make from a financial standpoint, you're exactly right.
Thank you.
I think it was the 2000s. You can correct me openly, it was the 2000s, not the 90s, John reminded me, it was before I was in this, so.
Me too. Okay, put together a chart here just to depict, and it's actually not very useful, but it depicts the cash flow impact of PEGO, which is the green bar, if this, if we're talking about a $100 million project, you'd pay $100 million today, and that would be the end of it. Financing over 20 years, current market rates would, and this is a couple of weeks old now, but it was about a 441, where I estimated the district's all-in cost, that's interest and issuance expenses. If you amortize that over 20 years, you'd be paying a little under, I think it was $6 million a year.
So let's talk a little bit about that, if you don't mind me breaking in, so we talk about impact fees being a funding source for that, so in theory, you could use impact fees to pay that debt service out of there, but as Mr. Ford said, it's also our most volatile, so will we have $6 million in impact fees 25 years from now? The district would be counting on something that they wouldn't, wouldn't know the answer to. We obviously have other ways to pay for it through millage and things like that, but it allows us, if we're acquiring 30 or 40 million dollars a year in impact fees, if we're only paying 6 to 7 million dollars out, it allows us to either use that towards other, other things, or towards to acquire that money and keep that money and put it and invest it, so we can make money off that interest rate.
That's right, and we can also, we can also split the baby here, we don't have to finance the entirety of a project, we don't have to PEGO the entirety of a project, we could put in $30 million of impact fees and finance 70 million, so there's a, there's a way to make this work, it's just an attempt to show the disparate cash flow impact. This looks really good, it looks really good, say, no, 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 we'll do the, we'll do the blue, that would be much better, and that's fine until you do it like, like 10 times, and now you've developed this, this big camel's hump in your cash flow, and it constrains a number of other things. If you do that, and a financial crisis hits, and the state of Florida lowers your capital outlay millage from, say, two mils to one and a half over the course of about a fiscal year, that can put every school district in Florida in a really bad spot, and of course, they've done that.
And Board Members, we've got about two or three more slides, and then we'll be opening up for questions for this section.
Yeah, this is pretty much my, my last one, well, two, two more. Didn't put anything in here today to talk about general obligation bonds or sales tax revenue bonds, happy to talk about those if anybody has questions, but there's a lot of interest right now in certificates of participation, which are lease purchase agreements, they are also the most common source of financing for Florida school districts, they are predominantly paid from your local capital improvement millage, but they are legally payable from other sources as well. The school board issues the debt in conjunction with the Hillsborough County School Board Leasing Corporation, I can't remember the formal name right now, but the Leasing Corp, on which you all sit, thank you very much, I don't know if any of you knew that you were going to do that, you control the issuance process, that Leasing Corp exists to essentially serve as the landlord to the school board, so you enter into a lease purchase agreement with yourself to build a school, there's a lot of market acceptance for this structure right now, there's generally very high credit ratings throughout the state of Florida, I think right now, Orange Schools is the most highly rated district in the state of Florida, but every school district that issues COPs and has a credit rating is well into the investment grade category, so that's a good thing. Because it's been perfected over the course of about 30 years, the issuance expenses tend Because it's been perfected over the course of about 30 years, the issuance expenses tend to be fairly low, and the credit spreads to the market tend to be fairly low. The, it does count as debt in terms of your audit. Your auditors are going to treat this as debt. There's really no difference from that to anything else. All these different forms of debt basically mean the same thing to you, which is that you're going to make payments each and every year to finance new school facilities. Public-private partnerships have come in vogue in the last five or 10 years, P3s. They are also financed under a lease purchase structure. I think it's actually the same statute that certificates of participation are structured under. The payments from that, if somebody does a, a lease build, I think is, is the term that we've been using recently, if somebody does a lease build transaction with Hillsborough Schools, it's kind of the same thing. The school board is going to continue to make lease payments each and every year on a new school facility. The difference is that the Leasing Corp. is not going to have any involvement there. It's going to be a third-party entity that is typically created to make that happen, but you're going to make those payments from your local capital improvement millage. The debt is going to be issued through a conduit entity. What does that mean? Well, that third-party nonprofit that's created actually cannot issue its own tax-exempt debt under federal law. So they're going to go through a conduit, such as the Florida Development Finance Corporation, or I think the only one of these that we've seen done went through Wisconsin Public Finance Authority. That carries its own baggage with it. People don't recognize the name. It doesn't carry quite as much of the market heft with it. And because it is separate and remote from the district's master lease program, under which you issue all of your certificates of participation, it does not appear to be able to achieve the same credit ratings, or at least the one instance that we've seen did not, and I would doubt that another one today would. There's going to be higher issuance fees associated with this, and higher debt services as a result. It also counts as debt for auditing purposes. I haven't heard this claim in quite a while, but back in the 20-teens, there were people saying, oh, this is not debt. It doesn't go on your books as debt. It is debt, and that may just be because of a change in Gatsby. But happy to address differences in this. This is where the district finances and constructs its own school. This is where somebody else finances and constructs a school for the district. I can only comment on the financing aspects of this, because I don't know a lot about construction. And then this is just a, a picture depicting school districts' certificate of participation credit ratings from Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, and Fitch. This is not comprehensive. There are districts that have been left off this list. For the most part, those are districts that are smaller and less comparable to Hillsborough Schools. But as I mentioned here, you can see that Orange County Schools, which is kind of right in the middle, has the highest credit ratings from Moody's at AA2. They're tied with Sarasota there. AA from S&amp;P, and AA from Fitch. They are tied with Seminole, I think, on the Fitch side, but they're the only one that has three credit ratings that are all in that highest mid-AA category. Hillsborough Schools is a bit lower than that. We are rated AA, or excuse me, single A2, A2 by Moody's. We do have a positive outlook right now, and that's good. That means that during our last review, Moody's analysts and their committee felt that there was a positive trajectory, and barring a change in that trajectory, they anticipated an upgrade within nine to 12 months. So hopefully, that will materialize for us. S&amp;P has us at the single A category as well. We are tied with St. Lucy under their criteria. And we are also rated A by Fitch. Pinellas Schools is rated single A by Fitch. We also have a positive outlook on that rating. So we have two posi, our ratings are fairly low compared to a lot of other Florida school districts. We do have two positive outlooks. We're hoping that that continues to go up. The single biggest influence on that, over which the board has any control, is the general fund reserves, the assigned, unassigned fund balance. Whether that's flawed or not, we can have that discussion, but under the rating agency's general criteria, that's the single biggest factor over which we have control. This is a summary of the district's outstanding certificate of participation debt. I don't know how much value there would be in running through this right now, but happy to answer any questions as you have it.
Okay, so we broke up into sections on, that was a lot. It's a lot of information that we just shared with you, but we wanted to make sure we stop for, take a pause at this section and, and ask any questions about A, growth management, what those needs are, about financing, that John is here before we move on to, to the next section. And again, a lot of these topics are interrelated, but wanted to turn it over to the, the board chair to ask those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Farkas. Before we go on to questions, I just want to state that we do have two board members who are online, Member Rendon and Member Perez. As of yet, I don't think that they're in queue to ask any questions. Are they in queue? Okay. I also only have Member Gray, Dr. Han, and myself in queue. Member, yeah, okay. And then finally, I just want to say, we have a lot to go through, so I'm just going to ask my fellow board members. We haven't been doing a hard and fast roll for minutes, but if you could try to stay within the five minutes with your questions and comments, so we can get through and always go back in, because we have so much to get through. So please be thoughtful with your comments, so we can address all of the information that we have today. So with all that kind of housekeeping, the first up is Member Gray.
Thank you for the housekeeping. We have a lot to cover. I want to thank Mr. Farkas and your team for doing a magnificent, comprehensive job, Mr. Ford, Mr. Wright. My questions are really a summation of the book right now, because I went through it. But it, it's not necessarily questions, it's just clarification. So the first, I just want to open up with the revenue sources. We talked about the millage, and yes, in 2019, we appealed, and 2020, we did get up for the millage, because we were one of the lowest districts.
You mean for the impact fees?
Impact fees.
Impact fees, yes.
I'm sorry. Yep, from the impact fees. So right now, we're at $265 million for the millage, right?
Yes.
And our revenue source also includes the half penny sales tax averaging about $13 million per month.
Correct. It's 206 for the year, yes, ma'am.
And then we have the CIT, which unfortunately will, will be subtracted in 2027 from 25% to 5%, which you brought out. That's going to hit us hard.
It will, except as, as Mr. Ford put in that there, there's debt services paid out of that initial CIT. So even though it's 25%, we never, we haven't received that 25%. And we, we have a debt service that's almost $25 million of that part of it, too. So we have gotten money, and we will see it go down a little bit, but it's not as dramatic because that debt service was already issued before we got here.
That's good news, and I know we have to giddy up and use the money, too, while we have it.
Yes, ma'am.
The possibility of leasing, I think, if you compare it to buying or multi-use, I think the lease is the best way to go for revenue sources. You mentioned those recommendations, and I, I know this is ahead of it, but it comes up to $154 million, and I think we're talking about the Rosack Parking Lot, Brewster. Can you give me the other three?
Sure. It's Rosack, the Rampello Garage, Brewster, and then Jefferson, and then also the, the parking lot by Leary. And we're going to have, Mr. Wright's going to go through that stuff in the next section, too.
Jefferson's about $104 million, and that's, but those are the, that's a possible revenue source.
And Ms. Gray, we're going to get into that. So in the next section, we're going to get into details pretty good on that, so on the next part.
So what I wanted to ask, after all these revenue sources, did we, do we have any notion that we'll get FEMA as a possible revenue source at all?
You mean reimbursement of what that is?
Yeah.
One of the things that Ms. Johnson did before she left is she actually funded a lot of our FEMA repairs out of our general fund area. So as we get reimbursed, that's actually going to go back to Mr. Lewis and, as the CFO. So traditionally, I would say that impacted capital the most. We've done that, but we've been able to, to fund that from the general fund, so it won't impact us as much as it impacts the, your general fund.
Yes, that's correct. So it's about a two-to-three-year timeframe we're seeing from a FEMA situation, where we get all the stuff in, and then we submit it, and it's a drawn-out process. But right now, you'll notice the, we'll talk about this later, but the general fund has taken some, most of those costs on, and we hope to get reimbursed. For example, a storm we had two years ago, we're just seeing the reimbursement checks come in. So it's a lengthy process, but that's more of a reimbursement process, not something, you know, we're just reimbursing ourselves for costs that we did incur.
And, and what I'm doing is trying to collect the, the entire revenue sources. And then on the opposite, the flip side, is the, the subtractions. You mentioned 40 million will be shared this year, right, with charter schools?
It'll be 40 million when we get to the, the full share. Right now, this year, we anticipated, we haven't gotten that bill, but about probably $10 to $12 million. Mr. Lewis and I have had that conversation. We, we don't know what that is. A little bit lower than we thought it was going to be in year one, but that will double this year, which would be right at about $11 million. When we reach full evaluation, which will be in three years, it'll be $40 million a year, correct?
Okay, so we're not yet at the 40 million?
Correct. We're at 40% of that this year. We're at 20%. 20% this past year, 40% next year, then 60, 80, and 100.
Okay, well, then that's less than I had thought. Also, when we talk about loans and those type of interest rates, did we have a summation of how much money we have, we are accruing in interest rates? That's a subtraction. And we had that tan note, and Member Han remembers, that tan note, that was a huge interest rate situation.
So we're paying just over $90 million a year in mortgages that we're taking, and mortgage, just use that term to include everything that we paid for schools earlier on things that no one around this table was part of. And again, it was for justifiable. I'm not saying it wasn't justifiable, but we're paying between the money we're paying CIT and certificates of participation that we did for schools that are around the Tampa area, and our millage, which is about 60 to 65 million dollars, plus the 25, or about $90 million a year we pay currently for mortgage payments, debt service.
Okay, well, that's a subtraction as well.
Yes, ma'am.
And just going through, again, we have little use, we have buildings that are being minimally used. We have human resources, not to mention the infrastructure HVAC and all the other costs. Those are subtractions, and I think we need to enumerate those, perhaps eight school sites, and of course, the recommendations that you have, which added up to 104 million, no, excuse me, 154 million. So those are decreases. The other question, or the other point, when we talk about the increase of construction, that's a huge drain, because it is a real, it's a reality, and I think we need to have that estimation as we go through costs. And I know that you're on that, on top of it, but wholly natural, what you just pointed out was a huge escalating cost. So Jamie, back to you real quick. We talk about fund balance, and of course, John, you mentioned, yay, you know, because of our fund balance, our high reserves, we got a bond lift. And correct me if I'm wrong, but because I was there during the time when we had the rating down, down, down. Why is it so important for us to have a high fund balance? I mean, I know what it's like to have 3% or lower, and so does Member Han, and Member Perez, for that matter. So now we're up to 12%, and the debate is, why can't we use some of that for, for instruction? So your take?
I think it's a great question. I think it's something, just from a personal standpoint, I think it's, it provides the district timing to make the best decision possible to move forward or to deal with unexpected changes. I think our Hurricanes are a great example. The general fund was able to take on that cost when we had a rough fall last year, and were able to do that and continue operations and allow operations to continue what they had to do, because if not, they would have had to divert from their plans to take on some of the charges. And as we know, we're trying to get FEMA to reimburse us, but that's a process, and that's, that's normal. So a healthy fund balance allows us to address things when they happen, emergencies and things like that. The other thing it allows us to do is when the budget comes out every year, we're able to see, as for example, this year, it's a little bit later than usual, and we have time to use the fund balance to help aid us in any decisions that we make. And so it doesn't force the district into immediate situation of decision-making. It provides us time to make the best possible plan moving forward that protects our schools and helps our students and our people, which are our greatest asset. And so it just provides us time and flexibility in our planning process.
Especially now with all the variables and shocks that we're receiving. So, and if there's any consensus, I am for the higher fund balance for many reasons. Last, we left off Superintendent Davis, with Superintendent Davis, we were going to close those schools, and we're going to, you know, do boundary changes. We flat-out stopped that. So where are we at with the future closings of schools and boundary changes?
Yeah, we, so we just, if you remember, just two years ago, the decision was made in May of '23 to move forward with our, our boundary shifts, and in that were five schools that were closed slash repurposed for some others. There has been no further discussion moving forward that I've had with this board either around any future. If that's something that, that we want to have discussion around, we can absolutely do that. But just two years ago, we, we've been in implementation of the boundary shifts. I mean, that, I don't want to underestimate the, the work that staff put into when you have a, a full attendance boundary county shift in, in closing schools. That was a big undertaking of our entire staff, and I feel like staff did an amazing job of, of working with our community, and that, that kind of happened seamlessly. So that was, that was a big, big undertaking, and I, there's no future discussion right now of, of further closings of schools.
Okay, well, I'm just looking at the emerging emergencies coming up and what we might have to do. And I'm up to my five minutes, so I'm going to go ahead and clear myself for the next round. Put me back in the queue after Member Combs.
I appreciate that, Member Gray. Actually, Dr. Han is next in the queue.
Yes, thank you, Chair Vaughn. Member Gray kind of teed me up perfectly here. So, you know, everything you've talked about this morning, we've, we clearly have a lot of confounding variables that are not reliable around money. That makes it, you know, kind of uneasy making some of these really big, long-term decisions, because things can change pretty rapidly, which sends a message to me that, you know, we have to be flexible. And, you know, looking at a potential major projects, you know, we have to be very clear with the public that all of this can change based on the variables that we've all discussed today. As things change, whether it's with, you know, different funding resources, this list may change. And so I think that needs to be communicated very clearly. Making, you know, I would imagine, you know, for some of these new builds, and I'm going to, you know, Member Gray said, you know, she brought up us closing schools. Just was one of the schools that we closed. It's a very difficult decision for this board. You were a part of that. You sat there in the front row of his cabinet, you watched it happen, and now I see it on, you're going to reopen it, and you're going to invest $23 million into it. And I don't know what kind of data you used to make that decision. It was very early in your career as superintendent, maybe three months in, four months in. You know, and, you know, one, I want to see all that data, and I would hope that it includes more than the number of total dwelling units, because Mr. Farkas clearly said that using that as an indicator as to how many kids you're going to have in a neighborhood is very unreliable, were your words this morning. So I want to see that data, and I want to see it by the end of today, because, matter of fact, somebody, maybe your chief of staff, somebody should be able to walk downstairs and get that data, that folder, and show it to us at the workshop, because that data should already be collected, since you made a $23 million decision. And I would really ask a superintendent to refrain from future press conferences around these projects until they've been approved, because it gives the community now a false sense of security, especially around Just, when you make those decisions. So, you know, that makes me uncomfortable. It can undermine the confidence we have in your leadership when things like that happen, because it doesn't just take one thing. Things can build up. You know, it's Just, it's this, it's that, and all of a sudden, you know, there's not a lot of confidence in decision-making. That was poorly executed, and, you know, I don't want to see that happen again, because it puts everybody, it may put you in the spotlight as the hero, but it puts seven of your bosses not so much as the hero, and we have to make a very difficult decision. We're the ones making that decision, whether it's a year from now, six months from now, and these variables are changing. So be mindful of that when you have a list of projects. As far as the financing, so, you know, what I'm hearing is, there's, there's two different ways we can go. You know, we can go the very traditional way as where we are the leasing agent. It seems as though, you know, the interest rate, I mean, if any of us have a mortgage or anything that we are paying interest on is, is crucial to the financial health of the organization, just as it is to every one of our families when we make these types of decisions. And that, what I'm hearing from you is when we are the financing agent, because of our reputation, which greatly has to do with the fund balance, as Member Gray discussed, we get a, we may get a very good interest rate compared to a third party being the finance leasing agent and doing the financing, who hasn't been around for, how many years have we been around, you know, this district? Who doesn't have the A, the A three rating and, and A plus rating and A, A minus rate, you know, doesn't have those high ratings, the interest rate. We lose control of that. We lose a lot of control in scenario B. Is that correct?
It is correct. There's a tremendous name recognition factor. People know who the School Board of Hillsborough County, Florida is. People know where Hillsborough County, Florida is. If we open Tampa Schools LLC, I mean, we just know, just as in our personal lives, if Dr. Han gets a mortgage, that's different than Han Properties LLC getting a mortgage. There's, you know, why are you doing that? There are also structural elements of your certificates of participation program, such as the master lease that we've talked about, that are very important from a credit rating standpoint. And what that means is that the board every year appropriates for the debt service on all of its outstanding certificates of participation as a single unit. There's no risk that the board will pick and choose between individual projects and say, we're not going to pay that one anymore. So there are protections in there.
Yeah. And the last thing I'll say, and I know I'm running out of time, is around the renewal of the half penny. And you, Mr. Farkas and I have talked about this at length and the importance of how we're communicating that, not just to the community, but to other elected officials within our community and the community because they don't understand the changes at the state level in capital funding for public school districts. They, they, they need to see the big picture like you did here for us today with the CIT, all the, you know, all the, the millage and how all that has changed in the last year and the impact of that moving forward for children across this entire county. Whether it's building new schools or maintaining and refreshing schools. You know, when I was first elected to the board, you were just kind of coming out of the reauth, the approval of that sales tax. And how many schools were sitting with no air conditioning? And buildings that, you know, no child should be expected to sit in all day. So, you know, I think there's got to be a little memory recall as well as just, you know, the impact. And that's the really nice thing about this particular tax is that it's, the evidence is tangible. So, you know, I, I, I hope you can set up meetings through our government affairs office with every local elected official as well as our, our, you know, our delegates in Tallahassee.
I appreciate you bringing that up because it is important and we see it as a three-pronged message. The first one is the half penny promise. You, you trusted us and gave us this money. As you all know, we have a citizens oversight committee, Mr. Lott was here a little bit earlier, from the citizens oversight committee, to overlook and make sure we spend every penny. So a third of the message is, you told us what to do, we did it. We know where every penny is. We got pictures to prove it and we did what we said we were gonna do. The next third is exactly what you said. It's an explanation of what is the capital dollar? What can this money go to? Why is it different than other funds? And kind of exactly what you said. And then the next third is, well, what are you doing with the next ten years? What does that look like? And so we a hundred percent are ready for that. We're backward planning to when it's due to the supervisor of elections to give us time to get it to the county commission office, get it to the board, make sure it's approved, because obviously that's the entity, you guys are the ones that would, would approve that. But we have been working very, very hard. Ducks, feet are moving very quickly underneath the water as we stay still because it is a lot of work that goes into it. And as this group knows, there was a lot of work last time. But we are actively doing that and look forward to bringing a plan to the board in the very near future.
And I'll go back to how I started this conversation. When you start to unravel the very difficult financial decisions that this board has made and it's the same exact board members, without a lot of real clear data and rationale, it undermines trust in the community when you're making decisions for tens of millions of dollars. So be very careful. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Han. Did you want to get in for the second round of queues? Okay. Member Combs?
I want to thank all of you for coming today and presenting this. This is, this is a lot of work put into this. And I think this is something that we have to continue looking at. As you know, I requested this workshop and I requested similar workshop last year. So one of the things, and I think it's because there's so much happening in our district, you know, besides, you know, our number one is to keep students safe, educate them, and then meanwhile, we have this huge growth in South County. And then in the urban core, we have, you know, a decrease in enrollment. And if you look at the suburbs, you're also having growth rates going down where you're kind of having, you know, a stagnant or, or decrease in some of the schools too. So it's, it's very complex. So one of the things that I'm gonna ask for is I'm gonna ask for, I know we talked about having a meeting at the, in December. Like I want to have a set workshop because I think often we talk about doing things and then we don't follow up. Like I know I saw December sixteenth is an available date right now, but making sure that we put a workshop. Also, one of the things that I want to request is a quarterly update. And I, I want, obviously on the suspended agenda, but I want like a quarterly, very active update on what's going on here from as far as growth, as far as also what we're looking at, maybe if we have to, what the schools look like that we've closed, what it looks like for schools that are still with low enrollment. I think we really need to keep our, you know, meeting once a year or discussing this once a year is not going to move things ahead. So I think making sure that you give us a quarterly and I will talk to our office assistant to say, this is the meeting. And, and every quarter during your closing, you know, closing comments, you give us really substantial, you know, information on where we are, what we're doing, what the enrollment looks like, what the plans are. Because this is one of the most important jobs that we have, you know, is making sure fiscal responsibility. And when you see funding, you know, being decreased everywhere and prices increasing everywhere, every, every penny and every dollar is gonna count. And I agree, this is very fluid, including the potential major projects as well as like, are we gonna do cash or debt funding? All of that is gonna be very fluid depending on where we are at that time. I mean, I think, I don't know who said, I think probably one of the most important things is to really inform South County, right? Because that's where the growth is and that's where sometimes you have voters who are maybe going to not want to support taxes or are not gonna want to support certain impact fees. South County really needs to know that that's where the biggest issue lies, where that, those needs are. And as those homes are being built, if schools aren't being built there, people need to be informed. Almost needs to be like a marketing plan to South County to inform them, you have these homes being built, but where are your students gonna go to school? And it's really important, if someone buys a home, they don't think about buying a home and not realizing they're not gonna have a school for ten years being built out there. And that needs to be like a campaign, some kind of marketing campaign to inform South County people. Because if we want the voters and our constituents to really support education, they need to know what's happening as far as building and what's happening in our community. Because there's no amount of charter schools or private schools that are gonna be able to meet the needs of the South County expansion. So we've got to, when you look at, we can only build five schools and there's thirteen needs. People in South County need to know as they buy those homes, where are they gonna send their children? Because, you know, what happened in Apollo Beach where people are just desperate and just, you know, dying for K through eight because there's no place to send their kids. So I think that needs to be really important, kind of a marketing standpoint and then those quarterly updates. As far as the, the funding and how the cash flows, and I have a question, you know, we want to keep our general fund, we want to make sure our fund balance is very high. We talked about the policy and then we moved against policy. Does that impact the ratings by having a policy like that? Or does it, but does it, or does it matter what's really, at the end of the day, what's in your fund balance?
At, at, at the risk of speaking for the rating agencies who I do not have never worked for, I think that the policy matters as it shows the board's intent and desire to maintain a specific fund balance. Fact of the matter is today, we are north of the proposed policy, as I understand it from a few weeks ago. So the absolute amount matters. Florida school districts are in general seem to have lower liquidity, lower reserves than their nationwide counterparts. A lot of that is because we have huge school districts in Florida compared to the average school district nationwide. If you go to Missouri, Massachusetts, Michigan, you're gonna, all M states, I don't know why I said that. You're gonna find much smaller school districts, one, two, five schools at a time. Florida, I mean, we're almost the size of Rhode Island in this county alone. So it's just different and we can enjoy slightly lower fund balances and reserves because an emergency is not gonna hit our entire district at once, generally speaking.
I'm not pressed. As your families, as you build those, those homes, that you may not have the capacity, there needs to be something to really inform those individuals that. Because you're having people going in there trying to make millions, billions of dollars, realtors, but they're really not looking at the infrastructure and what that looks like. So I think that type of marketing is really important. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs. Then Member Rendon's online and is in the queue next?
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I ask some clarification on exactly how we're going to section this workshop out?
That was actually something I was gonna ask about going forward. I'm concerned that we're not gonna have time to actually cover everything on this. So after we talk about this, we're gonna have to revisit whether or not, as Member Combs answered, we're gonna just have to schedule a second part of this.
Okay. I'm not sure if my question is going to be anticipated because it's kind of in between sections. But one of the things I would like, if possible, we could see moving forward with this workshop moving forward is we have the number of individuals and Stu when it comes to our FISH numbers. But we have no identification on exactly what the student cost is in each of our schools. So if we've got a school where we've got fifty percent capacity and it's in a magnet, how much is that costing our district per student in each one of our schools? Because that is very relevant as we plan and work within our district. So Mr. Farkas and Superintendent, if we could have that moving forward, I think it would be very helpful for us to understand our cost factor going out as we look at revenue as well.
And Ms. Rendon, and would you like to do that as a sample, like do an elementary or middle or a high school? How would you like that, that broken out for cost? Because obviously we can do a cost district wide, but I think you're looking for, what's the cost comparison of, you know, a school that has it forty percent versus a school that's at a hundred percent? Is that what you're asking?
Actually, a little bit more than that. I mean, we could have a, we have, we could have a school at a hundred and thirty percent or we could have a school at fifty percent. But that fifty percent could be a magnet and the cost per student ratio could be different as a fifty percent of a non-magnet. So I think we actually need to know individually by school what that individual student cost is. Because when we look at all of our costs going out the door for each of our schools, we've got to know what make that relevant. Maybe that magnet piece of that school is not, well, you know, that cost is a greater cost than it is what the return is. And I don't know that without looking at any numbers.
Okay. Mr. Lewis and I can get together and get that for you.
Okay, thank you. Oh yeah, right. I understand that. I appreciate that very much. The other thing is, I'd like to see somehow we are beginning discussions with the county. State legislature requires us to, the county to have a formula to create those student projections, to create that projection for all of our impact fees, et cetera. However, it doesn't tell them what they need to use. And as we've seen in the last five years at least, those projected numbers don't seem to be matching up with exactly the student stations we're actually getting. We're tending in the South County area to be getting more student stations than they predicted. Yet in other areas, it's less because they're predicting them in, you know, downtown areas where we don't have any students coming out of those condos. So having that in a better scenario and having those discussions, I think moving forward, we, we need to see some discussions with the county to have more accuracy for areas. I think that's much more helpful.
And Ms. Rendon, you're exactly right. And so the long-range planning study that's gonna be here in the next month is gonna be a great catalyst for that. They're gonna talk about the generation rates by area. So that is a great thing that we can meet, and I'll work with the superintendent to meet with county officials and Ms. Davis, so that we can go kind of have that conversation. It's part of interlocal, but a one-on-one with the county commissioners probably would be, would be a good idea so we can explain, you know, kind of what that looks like and they can understand what generation rates look like.
Thank you very much. And then, Mr. Ford, if you could give me a little bit more explanation, because I'm, again, this is not my expertise by any means. I know Polk County is using a lot of what we would consider a third-party leasing and doing some lease schools. They've done quite a few of them. And I see with their Moody's bond, it's a double A three, I believe. And yet they don't have any rating for S and P or the Fitch, but yet we do for all three. So could, is there some explanation on why that is?
Sure. So I think there's two questions if I understand it. First is why do we have three credit ratings and they have just one? And then the second question is maybe why are they doing the, the, the build-lease, lease-build projects? Is that right?
Yeah, because when I looked at what your notes were, it was like that was saying that we have a possibility of having a lower credit rating when someone else is carrying that lease. So I just kind of want to make sure I understood it correctly since they have a higher bond, which is how they are paying for a majority of their bills.
Yeah, that, that's absolutely the case. So as far as why we carry three credit ratings, Hillsborough Schools determined that it was advantageous to use three credit ratings at the time it issued the debt. That's when you pay for the credit rating. And at the time, we had a lot of benefits for showing Moody's, S and P and Fitch. The market waivers and from time to time, we will use fewer credit ratings. I think, I think we may have actually, and I don't want to misspeak, but I think it's possible on your last issue, that we only used two of the three that we carry on our broader, broader debt issues. There are occasions, although they're fewer and farther between, where a school district will issue debt and we'll use a single credit rating. But the institutional investors don't tend to like that as much. So we do analyze it on a transaction-by-transaction basis. And so to this point, we have issued debt with all three credit rating agencies and they all continue to rate the outstanding debt. So that's why Hillsborough has three. Polk County Schools is rated double A three by Moody's. And I had thought that maybe they carried another, maybe a, an S and P double A minus. I don't have my sheet in front of me right now. But the only transaction, and I am not their financial advisor, but the only transaction that I'm aware of that Polk County Schools has done is a lease build by issuing debt. The bonds were issued by a different entity through a conduit borrower and those bonds were rated A two. They were two full credit ratings below that of the school district. And that differential was simply because of the differences in structure and, you know, potentially other factors that the rating agencies were aware of that I am not. But those lease build bonds were not rated equivalently with Polk County Schools certificates of participation.
Okay, thank you so much. I was just trying to understand it a little bit more. And, you know, I really want to thank my fellow board members. I think a lot of, there's a lot of really great discussions. I agree with Member Combs where I think we do need to have a more of a semi-annual update on a public setting where we can be having these discussions because it's very important to recognize where we've been. I also want to make sure we're well-aware that in two thousand and twelve, our millage was at seven point nine and our millage had reduced down to five point four. We did add on the mill for our teachers, which is definitely a benefit to our teachers, but we are still at six point four. So we are quite lower than we were in two thousand and twelve. However, it does definitely impact for sure what we need. Do we need to, do I need to, are we good?
We're good. Go ahead. Sorry.
Okay, I'm so sorry. But I'd also like to comment with, and kind of piggyback on Dr. Han. Over the weekend, I was made aware of a Facebook post that said that we will be expanding Chamberlain High School and doing a complete rebuild on creating a tech center. I don't see that anywhere in any of this documentation. I would agree with Dr. Han that before we go public with any kind of information that is need to be board approved, we make sure we get board approval on before we are spending millions of dollars without board approval. I think that's quite valuable to be taken away from this is that it is the board's responsibility to make sure we have any approval of any of our costs going out the door and making sure that we have accurate data and information before those decisions are made. And so I would appreciate having that information prior to hearing it out of social media. I think that's quite important that the decisions of this district need to come from the board as it is legally bound by our state constitution as far as our responsibilities. So I would agree and I would appreciate that as well. And to the staff that put all of this together, it is a mountainous amount of work. I do appreciate it because it's a lot for us to comprehend and go over, but it was a lot for you to put together. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Before I go into my own personal questions, which I have quite a lot about, I just want to kind of reiterate what I'm hearing and what I agree with as well. I know that it's important and we've been looking at this workshop because you desperately want some input and direction. But quite honestly, with the amount of work that we've got, I mean, the amount of information that we got in front of us and the time constraints, I mean, we're well past when we're supposed to start our second one and we have multiple members still back in queue. I really think we need to break this workshop up. I think that if you bring it forward, from what I understand, it doesn't need to be a board member request. And if we have September sixteenth open, I think that's really the time to go through the second half of this where we're looking at each property individually and talking about rental and revenue. I'm not in any way prepared, other than what we've already discussed and I've met with, you know, Ford and Associates with to discuss the bulk of this. And I told you that in the original meeting that we have. So it, you know, we'll do as much as we can, but I, I'm not ready to really talk about what you've given us already and give any direction. and give any direction on that. And I would like to schedule, I mean, I think this needs to be multiple workshops. You know, I'm frustrated with how much information we are given in such a short amount of time. So I don't want to belabor that point anymore. I think we've kind of already agreed on that. Some of the things that I want to ask are, number one, I know we're talking a huge amount about the development in South County. But I have constituents contacting me talking about North Hills Bow and that there's a lot of redevelopment going on. You have the Keystone Association that's consistently concerned about that. They want to understand what our capacity looks like in that area when we're talking about Fish Report, when we're talking about McHittick, when we're talking about Martinez, when we're talking about Steinbrenner. From my understanding, those are already at capacity. So if we're having a lot of development in Keystone, then what are we talking? We haven't at all mentioned talking about expansion out there or what that's gonna look like. Also, Luce is also concerned about that. They're constantly concerned about development. Those areas are prime for development that we have not even talked about as a school board. And those communities have reached out to board members to see what our intentions are and to make sure they're included in the conversation as we have this. So I want to get that on the radar. Also, you know, when we're talking about how, from my understanding, the county commission is extending the service area by providing utilities to different areas, and that's where we're gonna expect further growth. My question has always been, sure, we're talking about the utilities, that's important. But where's the conversation around additional infrastructure? When we're talking about road capacity? I mean, we're already in such a nightmare when it comes to road capacity for our existing schools. If we're talking about sidewalk maintenance to make sure that their school, that our kids are gonna be walking safely to school, if that's gonna talk about transportation and what that looks like as increased expenses, you know? So I really want to understand and have an understanding of, when they expand that service area, what infrastructure goes along with that? Because I have a lot of concerns from constituents about reckless expansion without that infrastructure other than utilities. You know, I think it's important that we talk about impact fees. I think continually having a conversation and being clear about that is great. I know that Member Gray worked very closely with county commission to have that raised previously. We do have a different board. So I think that, you know, that kind of heavy lift, it would be a totally different lift at this point if we're talking about trying to work with county commission and seeing the value and raising impact fees. But I do want to clarify, raising impact fees has no financial strain on county commission. That's solely on the burden of the developers to make sure they're giving us enough to develop the educational infrastructure we need, correct?
That's correct. Usually, developer buys it on, pass it on to the home buyer or the builder.
So when we're asking for impact fees to be raised through county commission, we are not asking for any financial burden from county commission. We are just asking for accountability for the correct financial funding from the developers.
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. I appreciate that. Also, we briefly mentioned, and first of all, thank you for Ford and Associates for meeting with me and giving me time to have a lot of these questions already answered. I appreciate that. That was an invaluable meeting. But, you know, we briefly talked about the millage and how that was reduced in 2008 and how it continues to be reduced. Because we really mentioned impact fees as being the only way. But that's something we kind of brushed over is that the state legislation has consistently lowered our millage, the millage rate that we can collect. Is that, is that not another avenue that we can lobby and talk about raising our revenue through?
I would encourage you to try to have that millage restored, and you would find a lot of allies amongst other school districts in pursuing it.
And I think one thing that came through through our conversations is, that is something we might want to partner with charter schools on as far as getting a campaign raised. Because they would have a vested interest in that, too. And when we talk about, you know, going out for campaigns for more funding for public education, we are in the arena now where we have to partner with charter schools to get that revenue raised. So that might be something else that we want to, you know, think about, really talking about. It's not just hammering county commission. But since 2008, I mean, that's 17 years ago we're talking about. The state legislation has not prioritized raising that millage. And I think that's another conversation we need to talk about more than just impact fees. I feel like I'm going over, so I'm gonna try to, try to go through this very quickly. I do have a lot of comments in response to rebounding our empty buildings. I wanted to ask about what it looks like with the last piece of legislation that was just slipped in there this last minute about Schools of Hope and what that's gonna look like occupying our schools. But I think that's a conversation for our second piece when we come back. I do want to talk about rebounding schools and what that looks like. I know you said, Superintendent, that you have no intention of that now. But I think that's a conversation that we have to talk about and look at, especially when we talk about overcrowding in some areas and undercrowding in some areas. I personally would never want to do a district-wide boundary, reboundry again. But I think looking intentionally at one school and kind of, you know, having the board members have the opportunity to really understand what that looks like and look at school by school is important. As far as like the Just, the whole Just Middle School, that whole area, I understand your frustration, but I also understand that previously to you coming on, Superintendent Davis had made promises to the community and had a whole board that he put together a committee to really, you know, lead the way on what that Just kind of redevelopment was gonna look like. So while I appreciate Dr. Hahn's concerns around transparency, I also want to be very clear that you kind of came into that with a committee that was already put together to give a lot of direction. And that's why I think it's important that we continue to have those conversations. There's a lot of things on this list of projects I do have questions about. And we slowly talked about that as a board meeting. You know, I was told it's a living document. But there, you know, there are a lot of things on that list that I don't know how that got on that list. So it sounds like whether it's Chamberlain, whether it's Just, whether there are other projects on that list, we all have questions about how that priority is happening. So I think that's all important things that are gonna be in that second piece, hopefully, and that we'll have time to talk about. And that's all that I have for right now. I mean, I'm definitely gonna get back in the queue if we have time for it. But I guess that means, let's see, we are at 11:15. So you have 45 minutes with three board members, probably four who are already in queue for comments. Do you want to move on to the second piece of this and try to fit that in?
Well, it's, it's a good question. It's obviously the board's will. Mr. Wright is a, is a local businessman. I'd love for him to at least share his opportunities, opinion on that. With not the idea that you're not gonna be making a decision on that, but just kind of how we came up with the evaluation, his opinion on that would be great. I'd like to not take him away from his job for another couple. I'm sure he's gonna say, I'll be happy to do it, because he's been a good partner with the district for years. But I'd love an opportunity for Mr. Wright to at least be able to talk about kind of the evaluation of properties and how we got to those so that we don't have to bring him back if we don't have to.
Member Combs, are you gonna want to ask questions then?
Yeah, I mean, my, my thing is there, it's all interconnected. So I think we need to see the whole picture and then break it up later. But I think we need to look at the whole picture because you can't look at growth without looking at also, you know, the opposite of growth, right?
Are you gonna be able to do that in 15 minutes?
Just by the volume of information I shared with you, I don't think my, if you had two hours, I couldn't get through all of it. And that's not my intent in being here today.
Sure.
I think trying to give a very high understanding of what we looked at, how we look at things so that it could arm you, they are all interconnected. I 100% agree with that. And I think having some idea of how, how this is done, even if we don't get down to the very specific detail of each, would be helpful, in my opinion.
So my point is that we have 45 minutes left. I anticipate there's gonna be at least 30 minutes with four, five board members in queue for questions with the amount of response it takes. Are you able to share enough information in 15 minutes that it'd be worth your time?
Yes, because the methodology is going to be the same for every site. You know, we're not changing it every time for everything, so the process of.
Okay.
In terms of really being able to dive into the individual sites, absolutely not.
Okay.
But process methodology, I think, absolutely.
Okay. Well, if you have the time then to do the overview, let's get started.
Works for me.
I'd rather see the presentation than the queues.
Well, and I'll be as quick as I possibly can to accommodate this. But, you know, first and foremost, we were provided the list of sites to analyze. We were not involved in that. It was purely to look at the sites, interpret them, evaluate them for value purposes. Most of them would be repurposed in our analysis. And so we go through the process of understanding what that could potentially be. The scope of the projects, obviously, are, we're sitting in one of them, the garage, very close. Brewster up in Tampa Heights, Jefferson High School in West Shore, and Leary out in East Tampa. All very different sites and markets. So this, as you get into them, while the process is the same, the outcomes are changed by the actual data that's performed. We want to go through understanding things like the land use, the adjacencies, things that are around there, the current market conditions, and ultimately, the rental rates. An acre of land is not an acre of land. You know, if you put it in downtown Tampa or you put it in Plant City, the value of those are tremendously different by two main factors. One, what you can build on it. If I can build a, you know, a house, it's different than if I can build a 30-story high-rise, the density. And then the other would be the market rents, right? That what the market will bear, whether it be, you know, for sale price or for rental rate. When you put those two things, and cost being a third, but costs are fixed. We don't really control costs, the cost would have costs. And so we look at the lens to understand what market demand, you know, supports each use. And so we went through each one of the major product types. Multifamily, office, condo, hotel, hospitality. Those are the predominant uses that would be considered. On one of the sites, we also looked at a townhome development potential, but was not. We also consider the buildings as-is. You're in a building right now, you could potentially lease this building to somebody else. What does that look like in comparison to selling it as land that would be torn down? So we take all of these various models. That's what's contained in there. You have the market studies for the various uses from comps. You have the financial models that are simplified to illustrate kind of high-order magnitude outcomes. And then as we are able to decipher which one is going to most likely derive the highest value, we then are, we get to our recommendation in terms of price and use. We back into them based off of the completed building. So if we were thinking that you were gonna build an apartment tower, we start with the underwriting of what the completed apartment tower would be worth, what the rents would be, what the expenses would be. And we back in to build up, back down to the approximate land value. Now, there are many things that've changed over the last three years in the real estate market, but certainly here locally, the interest rate increases has frozen our market. It has frozen migration, less people are moving here than they have before. We're gonna see some of the lowest migration numbers probably in 10 or 14 years that we've had. We're still getting a large proportion of that. But those things weigh greatly, not just in terms of the value of something, but the feasibility of moving forward with it. And, you know, if this was three years ago or three years from now, values can fluctuate greatly based on those, on those factors. So this is a current snapshot based on the current market performance of the various product types and, you know, basically our assessment on, on what makes the most sense from an economic perspective. Some challenges that are being faced in the world today, particularly around new development. Number one is the slowdown of migration. Less people coming to our area than there were for the preceding five, seven years. The high interest rates, really record interest rate increases three years ago. Markets are very efficient. So when it goes from 3% interest rates to 6.5% interest rates, it reverberates through that business very, which is frozen development for the most part. Because of the slowdown, 2024 specifically in apartments, saw the highest delivery of apartments in the history of the Tampa Bay area. There was a lot of product being delivered at the exact same time of a slowdown in population migration. So you've seen rents go down, flatten and go down over the last two years. That's starting to abate as absorption was very strong. But apartment rents have been going down for the last two years. And that will eventually run its course, right? With very little development pipeline, while '24 was the largest ever, '25 being substantially significant. When you get out to '26, '27, the development pipeline for multifamily units in Hillsborough County basically drops to near zero. Again, because of the economic reality that it has faced over the last several years. That being said, you know, if you get longer-term outlook beyond that, we're absorbing now, nothing will be built, the market will get tight. And in the future, you're never building to kind of the current demand. You're always building to what you think is going to happen within the multifamily space. And last but not least, because of the years preceding, the last few years of rent decreases, you had 30, 40% rental increases over the 2019 to 2022 period. That substantial increase in cost of living has created a tremendous demand around affordable housing. And I think that will continue, you know, for some time going into the future and a lot within that. As it relates to methodology, I just would want to pause there, given the time constraint that you had mentioned. Because my next would start to go into the individual sites. Methodology, though, I would want to pause and just see if there's any questions related to that, if that's okay with the members.
And I just want to share before any questions. One of the important parts of having Andrew here is, obviously, he's an expert in the field. He lives and breathes in this field, and that's why we wanted him to take a look at it as opposed to someone coming through an educational lens. But if there's any questions for, you know, how we kind of look at those or how Franklin looked at them, we'd be happy to.
I have hundreds of questions that we don't have time for, which was my concern to begin with. I know that members are already queued up, and that doesn't even address the previous questions we have or ongoing questions we have. And we're about at seven minutes. Are you available for private meetings on this if we need to?
Yes, of course. Yes. I will make my time available to you guys as much as possible and needed. Again, my wanting to just jump in wasn't to answer the depth of questions. It was just to kind of give you a very high level to even frame the information that you're looking at. Because I know that if I get a packet like this and have to digest it and it's not what I'm used to looking at, it just kind of glazes over and it takes a while. And so I'm happy to meet with members one-on-one to walk through our methodology.
So I'll save a majority of my questions for a one-on-one meeting. Dr. Hahn, you had a question immediately.
I have a quick question. And it's on page 38, when it comes to the five properties that you've chosen. Like Jefferson, for example, is that going to be relocated, that school? Or are you talking about closing it?
So no, it would be a relocation. The five properties were picked, were picked by me as a random site. Where is their use? So Brewster was picked because it's in, it's in Tampa Heights where there's a ton of growth seminal across from Jefferson.
So is that a relocate or a close?
It would be a relocate. None of those were that far down the path. We just wanted to look at the actual property. So the board would decide, hey, do we want to rebuild this? Do we want to relocate it? Or is this something we want to close down? That was, that wasn't a factor. It was just, we wanted to give a value of what that property underneath it looks like. Because we get approached a lot from, from my shop about, you know, specific properties.
But we can't sell schools. So if you relocate Jefferson, you can't sell that property even though it's worth a lot of money because of where it's located.
No, there's a couple options you could do there. If you're having it somewhere else and doing land swap, kind of what the sheriff's department's currently doing with the Grow Financial, that part of it, too. So there's other ways to do that. But no, you're exactly right. You can't sell schools. That's it. But we've heard a lot of, because remember, across the street, they knocked down that Doubletree. It's gonna be a multimodal center with that part of it, too. So it's always about highest and best use. Is it realistic to do that? That, there's a lot of variables.
You're gonna have to go out for some RFP with the land swap. I'm not going back down that road.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Was that the?
On this, I don't know if you want me to go back to my other question.
No, we're gonna try to schedule time. Did you have questions on this piece specifically, Member Gray?
Well, yeah. Anyway, I just wanted to know all the variables. I mean, we see the interest rates, the oversupply, the affordable housing, high construction costs. What else? What other variables?
The good thing about real estate, it's not, while there's a lot of things to it, it's fairly simple. It's what it costs to build it, what you, including the land, what you can lease it for, what the financing costs would look like. And then the interest rates correlate to a pricing metric that we call a capitalization rate. A cap rate at its simplest form is a rate of return if you paid all cash. So if I bought something for a million and it throws off 100,000, I get a 10% return. Those correlate directly to interest rates. And so that, that is, because people utilize debt so often within real estate, it's an asset class that is generally highly leveraged with debt. They look at the correlation of those. So when you look at cost of borrowing at what was 3% or 4%, and you're able to build something at 5%, you're getting a positive leverage spread that drives value. When it was worth 5%, and now all of a sudden borrowing goes from 3% to 6%, it resets that 5% value. So while interest rate is also important, I'm making the point that interest rate's not just important in the direct cost related to it, but it's impact in the valuation multiple that would be assigned to it as well.
Increasingly more knowledge needs to be had. I'm done with that.
You have a few minutes to finish.
I would say, maybe just in closing out, a lot of it's assumption-based, right? When you're, when you're going through all of the various projects and trying to understand what is going to be there, Jefferson being, you know, the most extreme, it's 60 acres. What could it be? It could be a lot of different things. We are making a lot of assumptions just based off of what we believe it could fit, what the market acceptance would be, based off the various uses. And so in each instance, you know, when we go through them, it's not just an assumption that, I thought this was a good number, personally. There's substantiated data based on all the competitive sets, whether it be rental, whether it be for sale. Everything in your booklet contains all of the market data that would back up the opinions. There's almost zero opinion, other than the very end of us making a recommendation based on all the data and analysis. But I just know that you had mentioned having data to substantiate. Info and decisions would be very important. I think there's excess data in there on all these elements.
Okay, so we still have a round of members who had questions from the previous one. And this information, Member Gray, did you have questions that you wanted to address before? before I moved on?
Yep, and I'm going to include just both, both areas. So, and going back to board comments, when we talk about future workshops, which indeed, we need to have the clarity, I definitely would like to see that inclusion of a finance plan, because all this hits our finances directly. And Jamie, you and I have talked about that. So I would like that to be included in those future workshops, how it affects us financially. I also appreciate the board members' comments about keeping track of the expenditures and, and our revenue, what's coming in, expenditures like Just, Stewart. I believe Superintendent Van Ayers, it would be best to put together a dashboard. I know we talked about suspended agenda to Member Combs' point, but a dashboard, a visual, and I don't know what that exactly looks like, but you heard board comments, we have to go ahead and start measuring the, the revenue streams that are coming, and then the deficits that are, that we're seeing. And the public needs to see this, because before you ask for money, and we all know this, you have to manifest savings, and you have to manifest, you know, what we, what our fiscal situation is. So manifesting means showing how we're saving, and showing what we're spending, and how careful we are. So we'll talk about that later, but I think, go ahead, go ahead.
No, just getting clarification. So on that, the dashboard, are we talking on that, that encompasses both capital and operational dollars, kind of?
Capital for sure, and operational, because, I mean, this is a big part of our fiscal future. And when it comes to the direct correlation with what Mr. Wright's saying, and this is not necessarily now, but a visual, when you talk about those five sites, you know, how the oversupply affects, how the interest rates affects, how the affordable housing affects, how the increase in construction. Sometimes it's better to have a visual.
Yeah.
And it needs to be in real time, not another six months, but I think with everything so shaky, shaky, or I don't know if Mr. Farkas is shaking, but things are so much in flux. So I would rather, the best to your ability, to have it by the dais, on the dais during our school board members.
Okay, yeah. So I know as board members, you get budget amendments every, every month, but those are on the operational side. So there's nothing really, so I think I get where the board is going with this. You get a lot of operational updates constantly every month, maybe a day. And I'll get with Mr. Lewis and Mr. Farkas of what that looks like, if there's some, if that's out there. And having a capital component, because that is, as we're getting into capital, that is not something that you get, other than having one-on-ones with Mr. Farkas on capital. You get your budget amendments, operation all the time. The capital side is something that, you know, you get, just not publicly displayed. So I get where this is going. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's such a big piece of our budget. Also, in agreement with Member Vaughn, I also think the idea of impact fees, we handled it last time. I think we can handle it again. Handle meaning bring it up again for consensus, because revenue streams are going to be critical, which means even the prospect of closing schools needs to be also on the table. I don't imagine us going to a land of wealth the next year or so, or three years. So we can't put anything off the table. I also think that the millage increase, although that was a hard one to get changed, but that was a great idea, Member Vaughn, to share it with the charter schools. And I think we have those possibilities. I don't think we can close any door to looking at where we can get money, right? So, I mean, you're looking around the board members, and I think we all are at that point where we have to start thinking every opportunity. So that's all my comments. The boundary changes, yeah, I definitely think that, that that's an opportunity which connects with school closings, school site closings possibly. So those are all my thoughts. Thank you, Member Vaughn.
Thank you, Member Gray. Dr. Hahn?
Thank you. You teed me up again, Member Gray. It's like we're on the same wavelength today. Impact fees, you know, we're talking, or we're going to be talking about affordable housing, we're talking about the need to double, triple impact fees. But, you know, we're in this place, and it came up when Member Vaughn asked her questions, you know, the county commission is a pass-through. And, and this, this increase gets passed through right to the homeowner. So they're probably thinking a little bit about that when they're making those decisions, because we're in this crisis of housing has just gone sky-high. And, you know, you can't say, well, we're going to double impact fees or triple them to do this, solve this problem over here, when it's just exasperating the problem of affordable housing. Whether you're talking about a $100,000 townhouse for a first-time homeowner, or a million-dollar home, you know, it's, it gets passed on to the, to the homeowner. So we have to, you know, there's got to be some kind of balance there. You know, you can't say you want affordable housing and then triple impact fees. It's, it's, it does, it works against each other. The other piece is K8s. You know, we've heard a lot, it's, I mean, parents really want K8s. And so, you know, whether it's converting schools or building new schools like we did with AIDM, and, and I don't really see that reflected here. And I think that we're in this really, you know, choice environment now, where parents are making it clear that that's the choice that's important to them, a K8 school. And I'm hearing it now from another school in my district, and, you know, and I'm hearing it from schools down in South County, K8s, K8s. So how much more expensive is it to build a K8 than a separate elementary and middle school?
From a construction standpoint, it's, it's not that much more expensive. In fact, there's some, there's some savings actually in co-locating. It's much more on the operations side of the house, on Mr. Lewis's side of the house, it's a little bit more expensive. But from a construction standpoint, it's not.
Because I'm looking at, you know, the Bishop Road Elementary Middle School, I'm looking at Stewart Middle and Just, like, why are we not thinking about our schools moving forward as K8s versus separate elementary and middle schools?
Good question. And that will be a board decision or recommendation. So we're, obviously, two of the last three we built have been K8s on that part too. So I agree with you. That is just what was originally plotted.
They built it like that, right?
They did. They both are, have a waiting list. So they've been very successful. So to answer your question, I think that, as we talk with Mr. Lewis, it may be worth it to spend a little bit more to operate it than it is to do that part of it too. But nothing on there, whether it's the water set site or the other sites that we have that are, that are there, that would stop us from doing that, would stop us from having K8s.
You know, it's interesting, because when I watched the State Port of Ed meeting, the superintendent of Indian River spoke, and in their strategic plan, it was, they are committed to building K8s moving forward. And they, specifically, he said, they're responding to what parents want in this, you know, in this world of choice that we're living in, that they are being, you know, very mindful of their consumers. And they want to keep those families or get new families. So, you know, I, and I know they're a much smaller district, and it's not apples to apples, but I think, given the feedback we've received from parents over the last three or four years around K8s, we should think about moving in that direction as well.
I agree. And Dr., thank you for, yeah, sorry. Thank you for bringing that up. As we, as we've seen in our community, over the last probably five or six years, the want and need for K8 has increased, and we've seen tremendous popularity with Apollo Beach that we just did last year, AIDM, as you mentioned. I think we can tie this in, I think it was Member Rendon's comment around student cost per school. I think that would be a number that we could look at to see a K8, because if you look at K8s, obviously, you're getting a middle school that's 200 to 300 in a middle school setting versus a traditional middle school that might have 1,400. So we'll get the data, but I would, you know, the assumption there would be that the student cost per school is going to be higher at a K8 than a traditional middle school 6th, 8th. But that's, that's an investment. I mean, if it brings students into our district, it then generates money. Is it then worth it? So thank you for bringing that up. Yeah.
Yeah, but if you're building these middle school and elementary schools right next to each other.
Then you can make those larger, you can make those middle school larger.
The cost differential is going to be the, the personnel cost for the middle school kids. Because the middle school, to Mr. Harris's point, the middle school campus and numbers are a little bit smaller. So you have to pay a little bit more for the electors.
We're still calling them separate schools, a middle and a middle.
Construction's going to be a savings, because you're going to have, and we use, you know, many examples, AIDM has one cafeteria, one gym. You know, York has one cafeteria, one gym.
Right.
If we build it as an elementary, middle school, we'd have two cafeterias.
So you have right now, on Bishop Road, the elementary and the middle school to be built, and they're obviously in close proximity. Why not just build a K8 on that site and not have to duplicate those efforts on each?
That, and the Plant City site, there's a couple of sites that are large enough.
Same with Stewart and Just.
And we've shown with York that we don't end with AIDM, that we don't need as much land as we did traditionally to do that. So we can do it in a 15, 20-acre plot.
Just a thought of being a little smart with, you know, responding to what parents want, and trying to, you know, attract. But, you know, I do think we need to really focus too on just various revenue streams, and we'll get into that at the next workshop, obviously, as this conversation continues. So thank you. That was my question.
Thank you, Dr. Hahn. Member Combs?
Thank you, Chair Vaughn. I mean, we really could, I broke this down really into like five areas. If you look at the growth management, growth alone in South County and beyond, you know, the funding aspect that we talked about, and I appreciate all the board members, you know, Member Gray, and Member Hahn, and Member Vaughn, talking about all the funding sources. And then looking at some of these large buildings that we're talking about, when we look at Rosack and, you know, Rampello Building, and then the affordable housing, and then also looking back at some of the schools that are also under-enrolled, that continue to be under-enrolled. And that's something that I looked at. I mean, one of our biggest jobs is to, really, if we're going to try to get this half penny tax renewed, we just need to make sure the community knows that we're doing every single thing, and that we're making sure every penny counts. So one of the things that we didn't talk about, one of the things that I'm wondering about this is, some of the market values, to me, seem a little bit low compared to what I would imagine, because I remember just not that long ago, the Rampello was 20 million. I know that that can fluctuate quite, quite a bit. So definitely would like to look at second and third estimates when we get something like that, because to me, the market value of some of this looked low, especially for Rosack. Buildings like this property that's downtown, that's never replaceable. I see these huge high-rises going around over and over. And we talked about a public partnership, what that looks like, you know, you know, working with the government, maybe, you know, the housing authority compared to working with a private partner and looking at that. So that's one thing. We're looking at all these recommendations. Thank you for your time and effort, but some of these looked a little bit low to me. So I definitely would like to look at this in, in multiple ways. One of the things that we talked about before, and I want to make sure we continue the path, is, and I know the board members, unless they've changed, we've talked a lot about leasing and not selling, although obviously we aren't allowed to sell. And to making sure that our policies, whatever we create, we make sure that we get an RFP and go out there. And so that's one thing, Mr. Porter and I, if we can just pull all those policies, we can sit down and review that. I want to make sure that no matter what happens in the future, whatever board members come after this, that we are really consistent, and that we make sure we have a policy to make sure that we're always making the best decisions, that there's no influence on, on, you know, how, how we do things, that we make sure we create a policy. Because I know when I first got on this board, as soon as I got on this board, I voted for Rosack to be an excess property. I remember that happening when I first got on the board. I didn't even know, and I was like, and I felt that to be very odd to me at that time. Do you know what I mean? When we first, I first got on the board, I think it was the first few months, I was like, why are we making this excess property? So it can be sold? So I want to make sure that we create really strong policy, so that way it's very clear for the future of what happens as things change and board members come and go for that. The other thing is, looking at, at creative ways of leasing some land. We've talked about the Pace Center, which is an amazing, I think Pace Center, our Pace Center is one of the only centers that's in a bank that's not located in a school. So we can do really wonderful things for different partnerships, to making sure that they're out there. So I think working along that way and looking at what the needs are, you know, we've talked about success centers, maybe locate relocating some of those. So there's, this needs to be broken down into probably like five different workshops, and we probably need to spend like maybe a whole day as a board, you know, like a, maybe a work, you know, a retreat, and just spend an entire day, all day, just looking at all of this, looking at all of the properties, getting more feedback. Because the one thing that I feel that things take so long when it comes to working for the government, I'm just being honest. Like, it just, you know, it's, I remember seven months ago, we had a workshop, and we haven't really moved that much, right? So I would like to see a movement, and, you know, I have three-plus years left. I'd really like to see a movement and see some changes in the next few years. So I think that's going to require us coming together as a retreat and really working hard on these topics, because if not 10 years later, this could, could stay. The other thing is, what's the most important thing is really having teachers in front of students. And we have to start thinking of ways to get that money, because we're not getting it from the state level, and looking at a true affordable housing for the schools that are really in need, where you have these huge vacancies in the urban core. So that's another issue that we'd like to look at. And then finally, I really believe, as I look through, and I looked at all of these fiscal crimes, there are some schools here that we just, in the future, we've already looked at the first lot. We have to look at some other schools, and I think sooner than later, that we just can't, we can't keep open. I can't, we can't keep schools open that have a few hundred students in there. That's just the bottom line. I have to put all my resources into students. At the end of the day, I talk about this all the time, you know, you can become a doctor, you know, being taught out in the field, you could be in the Taj Mahal without a teacher, and you're not going to learn. So at the end of the day, we've got to put our resources in front of students. I want to make sure there's a teacher in front of a student. I don't care if the school is beautiful and it's empty, if there's not a teacher in front of that child. So we, there's so many complex issues that we're looking at, but I would like to say a retreat at the beginning, and then continue to do workshops. These are one of the most important things that we need to cover. And as we ask for a renewal for the sales tax, and as we continue working with that growth, and we're looking at impact fees, we need to let the voters know, and, you know, our constituents know, that we're doing everything possible to make sure that we're really making really fiscal, sound decisions on every option. So there's so much, I have hours to talk to, but those are my overall views. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs. Member Rendon's online on Teams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And yes, I do want to agree on several of those points. I think it's a great idea to really dig in deep. I think this is very surface level of big decisions that we need to make. And, you know, Member Vaughn, I'm very much reminded of that decision when we had to re-boundary and redistrict the entire school and close schools. It is so difficult to make those decisions, knowing that what you decide impacts so many children's lives and their futures. And, and yes, there was a committee that was created based upon Mr. Davis's decisions, but that committee doesn't have the right to make the decisions, only the recommendations. And we never heard from that committee before it was publicly announced what we were going to vote on. And so I want to make sure we make it clear that ultimately, the board has a responsibility to be the fiscal agent of this district and make good, healthy decisions. Also, when it comes to the K8s, I think that's a great idea to really look into that. And if we can look at those cost factors and the cost per student allocations, really bring that around, and I really do appreciate that. I'd also like to know how, as we move forward with this discussion, each one of these different variables, nowhere in here do we have any of our current legislative changes with capital dollars. That's one very big, where they've created that capital dollar now can be used for other things, other than just capital expenses when it comes to the state's allocation amounts. And so I think that's important to know clearly exactly where our funding lies in the legislative changes. And so as we move forward with additional workshops, I want to make sure that we bring in how those legislative changes have made, and any future legislatures that is coming up in the next year, so that we can know how that's going to impact these decisions. I again, want to thank everybody for their cooperation and for major effort and work that went into that, not only board members, but staff, in putting this whole thing together. And I thank you for creating a future for these conversations to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rendon. We did have Member Perez in queue, but she said that she would get with you personally, Mr. Farkas, to have her questions answered. So I believe she's not in queue at this point. Is that, I want to make sure I'm not cutting her off. Did anybody hear anything different? Okay. So again, to follow up with you. Did we hear you, Member Perez, or was that just?
Yes, yes. I just would like to, you know, really quick, if, if we lease out any properties or anything like that, the build, the build-out is on the lease, the leasing, right? Am I correct? It's not going to be on us?
It would be part of the agreement, but yes, I would assume that that was what we would, we would put on the person that's building it out. That's correct.
Okay. And like my fellow board members, I want to thank you guys for putting this together, because it's really, really important. And, and together, because it's really, really important. And I have a second question. I know that I'm getting a lot of emails about Turkey Creek. And we're talking about saving money here, and our fiscal responsibility. Just, just a quick question. How much would it cost to put that, you know, kind of bring that up to code, that, that, that structure? And is there any historical building grants to possibly help with the restoration of Turkey Creek? And would there be any code enforcement issues that we would have to also address with that building?
That's a lot of questions. I'll try to, I'll try to answer those for you, Ms. Perez. So yes, we're going to change, we would change the use in theory, so all the new building codes have to be updated. We had someone look at it initially a few years back, that it, that it kind of looked at, hey, if I was guessing what it would look like, a few things have changed since then. So, Ms. Otero, General Manager of Construction, I have talked to an, to a architect who can actually give us a real cost on what it is opposed to an estimate. So that would be the next step. But to answer your question, yes, it would be a total build-out. There's not even a secondary egress inside that building. It was the old Turkey Creek High School. And so, bathrooms, you know, stairways, things like that would all have to be done, reminiscent of like a Tampa Heights, where you have the brick on the outside, but everything on the inside would be completely redone. I will have a real cost for you in the, I wouldn't say near future, it's going to take him a minute to do that, but I'll have a, we have someone that's on that job and starting that job right now. And I'll make sure I get a timeline to the board, because I want to give you a real cost, because I agree, we've got those same letters. But I want to give us a real price of what that, that looks like, as opposed to just the initial, initial conversation.
Yeah, but when we're talking about fiscal responsibility, and looking at all these properties, and saving this district, you know, that would be something that I, as a board member, would want to be put on the back burner at this point, right? But thank you. Thank, thank you all for all this amazing information. I appreciate it. Thank you, Member Vaughn, Chair Vaughn, for allowing me to, a couple.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, I have some questions, and then I'll just kind of go into some closing. Well, some are questions, some are comments. One, you know, honestly, one of the things that I'm taking away from this workshop, and Dr. Hahn, you'll be very excited about this, is that the value in having a very robust fund balance is directly tied to our credit rating. I mean, you've emphasized, that's the most important piece that we can actually control and manipulate. So, I think that's a valid point, that I wish I, we would have maybe talked about earlier before that policy came to fruition, and we voted on that. But I just want to reiterate that that's a very important piece, that that is the only thing that we can control. And if we're looking at having to finance building schools down the road, from what I'm hearing from you, the direct correlation and what we can control is what our fund balance looks like. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay. So I just, to get you excited, I want to reiterate that for you. The other piece is, I did want to, I know that Member Combs talked about housing, and I know that's something that she's very passionate about. And I know you had talked about maybe partnering with specific groups. But here on page 54, there's the actual statute, right? And it talks about who we can partner with, and that's only HUD, ship, and local programs. Would the Housing Authority fall under local programs, or how subjective is that last piece?
They would, and we, there's a few, that's a pretty broad law in that part too, but yes, Housing Authority would fit into there, to answer your question.
And I think the point that Member Runden made about having this conversation before we've really digested the legislative changes, and what that's going to look like, has an effect on that. Because we can make decisions now, but when we have that legislative update, if there are a lot of things that change, like I mentioned, that last thing with the Schools of Hope now possibly being able to come into our buildings, that's going to completely change the direction of the conversation, what board members think. So I think, understanding legislatively what changes are made is really important to this conversation. And I'm excited if we have that legislative meeting before we have our second piece of this workshop. I also want to say that while I agree, Member Gray, that we absolutely need a financial plan, and you have asked for that repeatedly in making these decisions, it's incredibly hard with the fact that we're not getting our fourth quarter count, the fact that there's so much changing legislatively, the fact that, again, I'll reiterate, at some point, they just came in and took millions of dollars back from us because they overspent on vouchers through no fault of our own, that to Mr. Lewis's credit, it's very hard to give a financial budget when we constantly can't count on our revenue sources, depending on what the state is going to allocate to us. So, I just want to factor that in, because I know that's an incredibly challenging piece for you, to present us with a plan when revenue continues to change. As Ford and Associates has said, everything is very volatile and unstable right now to build a plan around. My words, not yours. I do, I do understand, and to Member Runden's point, I appreciate her bringing up the fact that while there was a committee, we didn't have any information or updates from the committee, or we had very few, when we're talking about Justin Stewart. And I think that what we're hearing is in general, when we're making any plans in any district, when we're talking about our list of projects, it's more important than just as an agenda item, as a board, at a board meeting, to have five minutes to talk about that, that all of us care about our districts, and what's happening collectively countywide, and we need to have better discussions about that. My point was just to say, that's not a decision you walked into and unilaterally just made that, that there was work previously done on that, whether there was transparency around it, and the board expects more. I appreciate that, but, you know, I was just making a point that that was already in the works when you came in. I absolutely love K8s, you know, that I'm always been a proponent of that. I think where I kind of got stuck on is, if we are making K8s and designing those from the beginning, do we have to keep the middle school so small? Is that what we're intending? Can we expand the middle schools to have larger sizes? Because that sounds like that's one of the areas of concern when we're talking about, is it worth it if we're going to have small middle schools and we're not going to be able to accommodate as we grow? But if we design it from the beginning, can we make those larger?
Great question. And here, let me try to explain it in a very, as concisely as I can. So if you look at an elementary boundary and think of it this way, elementary boundary is our smallest boundary. When we do a middle school, which is six, seven, and eight, obviously, it's a much larger boundary that has two or three elementary schools that do it. The number of students don't equate. So if you want to make it a true K, meaning you have the same kids from kindergarten to eighth grade, your numbers in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade are going to be lower. If you want to do something where you've got application only, and you could add more kids to sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, then you can always add it. So to answer your question, we can make it as big as we want to, but if the numbers are going to, you know, if you're going to matriculate through all the grades, your sixth, seventh, and eighth grade's not going to be as large as a traditional middle school, because a traditional middle school is 1,000 to 1,400 kids, and we have 300 to 500. But if you look at Turner Bartels in your, in your district, which was not designed-
Do you really want to look at that one?
Yes, not designed as a K, and there's people that love, absolutely love that school. It wasn't designed that way, but the middle school is larger than that, because it has the old middle school boundary. But it's not, in definition, in educational terms, a true K, meaning that not everyone that's there from kindergarten finishes in eighth grade. So yes, but that's the issue.
Yeah, and just to add on to that, I mean, I think if you look at a decision that was made by the board, I think maybe three to four years ago, around Collins, pre-K8, that is, you look at an example, that is a K8, which is one of probably our largest K, correct? Was 16-
Other than Turner Bartels, yeah.
Yep, 1,600. And that was an add-on bill that has been tremendously successful with Collins. I don't want to, you know, lose that one, and all this decision was made about three years ago, and it's been tremendously successful.
Yeah, the last three that we've made K8s are all busting at the seams and successful.
Well, I would caution using Turner Bartels as an example, because there's a lot of infrastructure problems there with unit allocation when you have two schools, and that could be a workshop on its own. But I understand your point. I appreciate, Member Combs, bringing up the Pay Center. I think that's something we need to have a discussion about. That was a great example, and I'd like to talk about the Pay Center going forward. Also, I would love if, if we're going to talk about under enrollment, if there's a possibility, if we make a benchmark of what we consider under enrollment, whether that's 50, 60%, and then board members get a list of those schools, so we have an idea of what we're talking about. Because many of us who are district-specific know what that looks like in our district, but countywide, we want to be able to discuss it countywide. So whatever that benchmark is of percentage-wise, if we can get a list of schools that are under-enrolled. Also, one last thing, we've talked about magnet schools, but I think it's challenging to have that conversation, because we have so many different types of magnet schools. So there are ones that are just magnet schools and boundary for that, there are ones that have traditional programs in that too. So if we're going to talk about setting metrics on that, like, I'd really like to classify where that falls, and have a deeper conversation about magnet schools as well, because again, those are complex, and we have so many different models, that that requires a lot more conversations. As far as a retreat goes, I mean, I'm always open to retreat. Some of the challenges is meeting board members' schedules. We have a hard time finding places on calendars. So, I would just say, you know, we either have to decide at a board if we want to have a retreat, if it's, means we want to have every, every member present, or if we're willing to have retreats, and if a board member has to miss it, a board member has to miss it, because, you know, that's our biggest challenge, is constantly finding an eight-hour period on several, you know, seven different elected board members' schedules, no matter how far we try to do it in advance. So, we're going to have to either prioritize, we want to have a retreat, and we're going to do it without certain board members, or board members are going to be more flexible, because, you know, I just want to be clear about the challenges of scheduling that. And that's all that I have. I apologize that you came today and you weren't able to present, but I look forward to having any private meeting with you. Is there anything in closing?
Can I say something real quick?
Yes, Mr. Farkas.
You know me, I'm not the warm, fuzzy type, but I do want to make sure that, you know, there is a ton of work that went into this. Andrew Wright has been a partner for the district, and someone that I call when it comes to the local market and things like that. Ford and Associates, you know, have been a partners. The Growth Management Team, Dave Valdez, there's a lot of work that went into this. We've been meeting on this for months. I also want to give kudos to the board. There's a level of uncomfortableness when you have a topic this big that is not in your normal frame of reference. You're here to support kids, it'd be part of that too. So there's always that discomfort the first time we scratch the surface of this conversation. And we've had different aspects of it. So I just want to give kudos to the board for saying, let's embrace it. Let's have this conversation and talk about different aspects of it. There is, there was no easy way to break it down, but I think by having this conversation, you could see, and Ms. Combs made some delineations on what that looks like. So, I'll be happy to set up one-on-ones with, with Mr. Wright, and each one of the board members to see what that looks like, so you can go through it. Because I do think it's an important conversation, it's something that keeps me up at night, and it's something that I think that I'd be happy to share that anguish of what's going on with you all as well. But honestly, I want to thank you for having the conversation, because it is uncomfortable to have something this thick and have it a two-hour conversation. So thank you.
Yeah, and I think, Mr. Farkas, thank you to your team and everyone for being here. And to kind of summarize, I think some of the, some of the thoughts we heard as we move forward is that, you know, we just had a total district-wide re-boundary that was just done three years ago. What I heard was, not an appetite for that, that we're going to go all and do that again, so that is off the table. However, you know, really targeting certain ones, and, you know, I'll work with staff to bring forward some of the, what that might look like moving forward with some smaller, if we have to look at, you know, taking two schools, combining them into one, having another available property, maybe some smaller, just some smaller boundary changes within our district. But we'll definitely bring that, bring that forward, and bring that to each of you, to have discussion around individual, smaller boundary changes, rather than, you know, the full district-wide re-boundary that we just took on two years, two years ago.
All right. Well, thank you so much, every, everyone who's come, for all the hard work from the team, for all of our board members, and I look forward to scheduling the second one. With that, this workshop is adjourned.